...have been working on over the past probably two or three years. So, that's my 10 cents on that. Thank you.
I already mentioned I grew up in poverty. I moved to elementary schools five times in elementary school. And that was really disruptive. I had to reinvent myself each time and had to make new friends over and over and over. My daughters, even though they've been in the same school, we've been sent to the same area, they've had new buildings. And so, they've had a disruption even in the friends they've had over the two, three years they've been in that system. And so, I see this affordable housing issue really affecting my kids and their friends and their mental health when they're either forcing the area to be affordable housing or whatever it is. But yeah, it's really disruptive. And another thing I would say is, in addition, I agree with increasing the teardown or getting rid of the incentives for developers to do that. I think let's keep what we have where we have it. One idea I really like is although land is limited, if we did cottage housing, that's a really good solution where you're using a common space. The green spaces are shared among the different community in that area. Parking structures are sort of joint. That way, you have more areas left for the individual dwelling units that can house seniors who have invested their entire lives into the community. And they've needed to downsize for whatever reason but want to stay in the community. They've contributed so much. I want to keep them here. I want them and my kids to profit from their relationships and their knowledge and their experience in the world. I also want the young professionals who, you know, don't have two incomes to support the $650,000 level that the income housing is, just at that medium level. I want people who don't choose to have a single-family unit have an option that's available for them. Like I said, I'm in a condo and my living arrangement's amazing. I know my neighbors now more better than when I lived higher up in Mountain Park and had a bigger house. And the neighbors didn't speak to each other like they do when we're sharing a same building. Thank you.
All right, well, thank you all for your thoughtful responses. The next question is our final question. And each candidate can have up to four minutes to respond. And we'll start this question with Daniel Nguyen and go clockwise to Ms. Anne Booths and so on. So, the city council has influence over many areas that have the ability to impact how inclusive, diverse, and equitable Lake Oswego is. As we discussed, these areas could include affordable housing, infrastructure and transportation, city hiring, education, policing, city advisory boards, and community events aimed at creating a culture of inclusion. So, the question is, what is your concrete plan to impact change to make Lake Oswego a more inclusive community? Include in your response past experiences that demonstrate your ability to achieve success. And please be specific in your response. So, when you're ready, we'll start with Daniel Nguyen.
Wake up all the microphones.
It's a tall order to develop a plan in four minutes, but I'll try my best. They'll come to me as I tell me. But as I've said before, I think the first thing we've got to do is to appoint a diversity and inclusion advisory board at the council task force or advisory board. And really look to that council, look to that board, figure out, you know, how do we put this together? But I think the one thing, that's the first thing we've got to do. And looking at what other groups have done also. I mean, I look at my business, for example. Those are things that I think that, at the Port of Portland, for example, it's a very, it's kind of its own city in and of itself. And with us being a minority-owned business out of the airport, one of the few only minority businesses at the airport. And I felt that it's really our responsibility to really make the minority-employed community seen in the public. And so, one of the things I've done is I've worked with the Port of Portland sponsoring the Lunar New Year. The Lunar New Year is celebrated by half the world population. So, immediately after Christmas decorations were taken down, two years ago, I thought, can we do something else? And so, we had to look to the port and said, one part of the port said, why don't we sponsor a lion dance troupe on the first day of Lunar New Year? And so, we did that. And I think that the first year we did it, it was absolutely amazing for my employees to see their culture being showcased in the middle of the concourse, drums going, and the executive director of Port of Portland in Vietnamese traditional dress really drove a message of, hey, we are part of this community. And how those raggons danced from concourse scene through security and ready, all the way around pre-secure, come back into the DE side was something that was spectacular. I'm really proud of that because I think that, again, it shows that there is this entire community that is not seen and not heard because they work, what we call at the airport, under the wings. And so, they work underneath in the baggage handling companies. They work in the concessions program. They work in the janitorial. So, that's something I think that I've not experienced in doing. And looking also mentoring. I mean, one of the things I've done at the Port of Portland is thinking about how do we create opportunities for women and minority-owned businesses to really give in on this opportunity, the opportunity to achieve that American dream? So, one of the things I do right now, actually actively right now at the Port of Seattle is that we're constructing green restaurants up there. And we're thinking about how do we consciously think about our decision that we make with regards to contracting, who do we hire to build our projects, who do we have kind of desire, designer projects? I'm really proud to say that I've got a female minority-owned electric engineer that is doing work for us at all three of our restaurants at Cinecine Airport. Looking at our architects, you know, looking at who do we want to choose to be able to help put those projects together. And again, when we have an opportunity to put these professionals in front of the Port of Seattle, Port of Portland, it really elevates their ability to get more work and create more opportunities for themselves. So, again, that's something that I think that as a business, what I've done, and I'm really proud of. And I was just thinking about, you know, the whole idea about running for city council. I mean, it's, I think, again, that's one of some of my clients have said, you know, the best thing that we can do to promote diversity inclusion really is to get involved. And I'll, again, this is not a, this is a busy time in our family's life of raising two little kids and running a business. And again, it's something that I really feel that, you know, in order for us to not only, you know, talk about it, to be able to do it, and really help to be that inspiration, maybe there's somebody in the room, maybe there's somebody that's thinking about it, well, maybe they don't have the time to do it. Maybe I didn't grow up in a political family, I don't know where to start. But I think that's one of the things I think that we're all doing right now. Again, with this panel, I think it really speaks volumes to what we're doing to face inclusion and diversity.
So, the question, I think I'm starting with Daniel, and it is pitch. I think I am for city council because, you know, I'm here most of the time when I'm in Lake Oswego. It's just that narrative of Lake Noligo that I'm saying, not anymore because I am there. I built a school, the only nonprofit international school. You go there, that's where diversity starts. We have almost multiple countries that are serving the country, from Congo, from Algeria, from Scotland, from France, from Senegal, from Costa Rica, the teachers. And now, even every year and more so this year, the diversity in the children, it takes more. And, you know, we try, continue to show that. And how we are doing that also at the school. And that's where also I think we have to give a round of applause for the school board of Lake Oswego, that they create diversity committee, a diversity director that's working with us, with response to racism, to have ideas and to build something, I think it's very important. So, at my school also, what we do, we have immersion through culture. Those are weeks where we celebrate the culture of the multiple folks that are in the school. And like you say, we have African drumming. The kids will see me drum, they will see me dance, they see other folks coming there. And it's because to channel all these problems we are having of inclusion, diversity, stuff early, at two and a half, the kids will see, oh, my principal is a black guy. Because, you know, it's not common to see that. I think I'm the only black principal in Lake Oswego. So, and, you know, and we have also an international night when we invite parents to share their culture, all of them, nobody. It's very important. We organize an international women's day to show our students that are female, that women play a great part in the world. And we invited last year Representative Salinas, Andrea Salinas, who came as a woman telling the children that, hey, you guys can go do that. We invited the police, a police woman, to show the children that, hey, you guys can be police women too. So, those are things we do at the school that makes, you know, we develop something for the children. We are building a culture of tolerance. We are building, because it's very important that we start with the children. When we want, everything you want to build, it has to be the future that you are doing. So, what we are doing on that, on the inclusion, is that's my part. And also, when I go to the city, as I am an educator, I'm an educational scholar whose research is on diversity, inclusion, I want to work, I want to be the person in the city to work with the diversity director, my friend David, who's doing a great job. And thank you, the board of directors who are here. I want to be that guy that can go try to build that diversity in the city. I'm working because the board is independent in the city, but I can go talk to them, I can, you know, my, thank you.
I'll be honest with you, I don't have a concrete plan of what we can do to increase diversity. Both Daniel and Ms. Anne have spoken in different ways about making Lake Oswego more welcoming to people from different cultures, people of different colors. And I agree with that 100%. And what Daniel was talking about here, both of them, in fact, were efforts that appeared to be, sounded to be like they were organized in the private sector. And in the public sector, in City Hall, we can be more welcoming also. And some of the ideas that have been suggested tonight with regard to hiring from a more diverse pool and advertising our police officer positions more widely, so on and so forth, sounded good to me, and I agree. I can picture a celebration like Daniel was describing in Millennium Park, Fado, on summer evening, with bands from different cultures, different countries. Ms. Anne, if you would like to drum, then I will come and applaud with gusto. Those are the sorts of areas where we, where we can all work together, in the private sector and in the public sector, to make Lake Oswego more diverse. You know, there's a fairly large population of Somalis right over the hill, on the other side, on the Capitol Hill neighborhood. I see them over there when I'm driving, they're very distinctive, native garden. And, you know, how about a restaurant catering to Somali cuisine in Lake Oswego, which would tempt them over the hill and to come and to visit us? And maybe some of them would like to live here. There's, it's a two-way street. It can't just come down from City Hall. And it doesn't come, and I think we all understand that. So, I won't try to pull the wool over your eyes and tell you that I've got a full and concrete plan for how we can work on this. But I will pledge to you that I'm ready to listen to all the ideas that come out and to treat them with respect and to vote for the best ideas that come before us on the city council, if you elect me for that position. Thank you.
Since this is a longer response, I will go ahead and repeat the specific question again for the audience. What is your concrete plan to impact change to make Lake Oswego a more inclusive community? Include in your response past experiences that demonstrate your ability to achieve success. Please be specific in your response. Great, thanks.
Thanks for that. Neither did I. With all due respect to my colleagues, I am the only person standing before you tonight who has actually served on city council and has the ability or has the ability to change. I have a list of things that I've done. I have been, from day one, working with the school district on issues of diversity and equity. I've brought into city council, or into the city, a small group, diversity and equity group. It's not a task force, I'm talking internally within the city. With regards to infrastructure projects, you know, we have completed a lot of infrastructure. I know you did bring that up, so I'm going to talk about it. The Laurel Pathways project, which is the Safe Routes to School, Jefferson Parkway in Mountain Park, where many of our apartments and condos are listed. We have better that. We introduced a big one, so we're tearing our roads up, not four times on a project, but once. We implemented that up on D Avenue, Levittor Haven, once the sidewalk is in. I think people will find it useful, especially our children and folks who have problems navigating the street. We've seen the ramp up of Bootsbury Road, which we're hoping will stimulate economic development and maybe get some interest in public-private partnership for that last-mile transportation that can bring workers to where the jobs are. I've worked with Count Joe Up, my colleague, on forming both a tourism advisory task force and a youth leadership council, working directly with the city. I've made pathways over the past three years, pathways, bike paths, trails, a council priority, and bottom funded, which probably is a bigger deal than all of that. Installation of LED lights, climate action, they're truly is not a part of this city that I have not touched. I work hard, this is not a glamorous job. And I'll say that right now. It's, you know, 40 hours a week of getting out there and doing the work and talking to the citizens and walking the walk, which is why I make sure I'm at respond to racism, which is why I make sure that I'm working with David Salerno Owens at the school district, which is why I stand before you tonight and ask you to reelect me. Thank you.
And I just want to acknowledge Jackie's effort. And actually, I'd like to work with her again if we're both put on there this next term. That would be historic too, because along with Theresa Koa, who's endorsed me, we would have gender parity finally for the first time in Lake Oswego. And I think that's a really, really important factor. Otherwise, things I have done already, I would count my Girl Scout experience. I started a troop last year at our school because there weren't any available when my daughters were. So, in order to be equitable, I thought it would be fair to post a notice in the school bulletin that goes out via email every week by the principal. So, I posted the notice, and it was first come, first served. I thought that was the best way to do it, even though some of my friends got to me back after others did. I just, that was fair to me. I work, I pride myself on my fairness. And so, that was something that really mattered. We had some attrition, and so there were some spots this year that my friends were able to get in. But again, we went through a waitlist, we're cold once again this year. But what's nice about that is the people who responded, we had people I wouldn't know otherwise, because they were outside my circle. They did have a different skin color than my kids. So, it was nice just to open our own eyes about that. And then, as we went on into the school year, we had 16 meetings where each of the parents would lead and bring something from their culture to it. So, that was awesome. I know the schools do that as well, my kids have been involved with some of those. But it seems like it's very driven from the community. So, I think this opportunity, becoming a counseling, would give me the privilege to interface with even more community members and find out what their suggestions are, a process I think is overlooked right now. Because I'm really about engagement and listening to people. And I want to make sure, I consider myself an advocate. That's one of the reasons I stepped up for this. I felt like there were people in my socio-economic status group that weren't represented on the school, or on the city council, and really wanted to make that happen. Also, that we go to the public schools, and that my kids are in the elementary, that's where a lot of our new residents come from. They want to bring their kids here for our public schools, and they want to start them in those elementary grades. So, I feel like I can best relate to that level as well. Another thing is that I want to kind of call out this thing I've seen over and over in the paper about me, and despite me kind of calling them out on it, it hasn't changed in a minute. That's where my little bio comes in your pamphlets. I love, I'm very proud of the fact that I'm a key service organizer for Elamont, but that's a volunteer unpaid role. I do have an actual job, and aside from Jackie, our lovely opponent, I'm the only one up here with current government experience. So, I just want to point that out, just in case that a little blurb there doesn't, I feel like it still can be short. And as an advocate for others, I feel like I should also advocate myself, because that's something that's important to me. And I feel like I really bring a voice that's passionate and it gets things done. I'm very tenacious. And volunteer is a great pathway of life. It's important to me that things happen. I will speak to my role on the diversity, ethnic, and inclusion committee. We met twice in a weekend, last weekend, because some things had come up, the bus incidents I mentioned earlier. Even once we met, we found out there were more incidents that need to be addressed. So, the work of that is ongoing, but I've got time, energy, passion, I think is the most important thing I bring to this. But yeah, I really, I, there's things that need to be done here, and I feel like I'm the best candidate out there that can really move those things forward.
Thank you. I watched the September 24th meeting of the Commission on Citizen Involvement, the annual meeting with great interest. And I saw that Willie Poinsett, Bruce Poinsett, Amy Waterbury, Janet Cockwell, and Todd Trager really presented a compelling case for evaluating a task force, a time-limited, time-limited system task force, to evaluate and advise the city on diversity, inclusion, and transformation issues. I think that's something that the Commission on Citizen Involvement will work with on the staff, will eventually make recommendations for the city council as part of the commission and city council meeting that is held annually to work on planning for the future year. I also see the working group that's planning this summit, the Diversity Summit, as an avenue for evaluating a potential time-limited citizens' task force to advise the city on diversity and inclusion issues, not to duplicate the work the school district and equity coordinator are doing for the school district, not to comment on school district issues, but to comment and advise the city on these areas that have been discussed. I have been active in diversity issues as a member of the bar for many years. In 1992, I came up with the idea, organized, and moderated a panel of non-dominant culture lawyers at Portland State University for undergraduates to encourage them, who were non-dominant culture students, to consider up the law practice as a profession. As president of the Vol. Bar Association Volunteer Lawyers Project that gives, that gave free public, free legal services of a local nature to members of the public, I was involved in planning the 2001 Convocation on Equality of the Oregon State Bar. That gave rise to the Oregon State Bar Diversity Section. I immediately joined it. And as treasurer, the executive committee of the Oregon State Bar Diversity Section, I helped plan the 2011 Convocation on Equality. And in connection with that, was designated a champion of diversity by the Oregon State Bar. I present the chair of the Oregon State Bar Diversity Section and the executive committee that operates that section. This year, I've really been instrumental in spearheading a revised, interactive, web-based, dynamic program for private employers, legal employers, and law firms to assist them in recruiting, hiring, retaining, promoting, advancing, and mentoring non-dominant culture lawyers and legal professionals in the legal profession. Our law firms benefit from that because of the quality of legal services, the enhanced quality of the services we can provide. Our clients are also looking to us and asking to us about what type of diverse teams you're putting on our cases. And in some instances, our clients are actually compensating their private law firms higher if they have diverse shareholders, non-dominant culture, legal professionals working on their matters in meaningful capacities. The jewel kit for legal employers that we're putting together this year reflects issues such as statistics in the profession, advancement, recruitment, mentoring, and these types of things. One of the defining characteristics, I think, of my service as chair of a planning commission was my ability to reach out and actually listen to people from diverse groups, meeting with small groups of people, and making constructive, meaningful suggestions to them about how they can incorporate their ideas into the city. And I would continue to do that on the city council. Thank you. Are you guys still awake? I guess I did want to make one clarification. I have had government experience, I served eight years on the school board, and that was a long government experience. It's interesting how things kind of serenely approached you in the morning. I was reading USA Today, and there's a snapshot, and I don't know if you ever read that paper, but it's at the bottom of the corner of the front page. It said, 73% of Americans say racism is a problem in the U.S., with 56% saying it's getting worse. This is very sad. I think it's, the national dialogue that's been going on, the destructive nature of politics has gotten, in my opinion, way out of hand. I look at the sanctuary of Lake Oswego in many ways and say, wow, I think we're a community that works together really well. I think we have a community that cares. I think we're a very engaged, active community. And I think we can kind of set aside that discourse and work together. You ask for specific plans or concrete plan. I think the city council cannot intervene in every employee or any, every interaction between citizens and the government, but they can make policy. And that's what they do. When I was on the school board, we made policy to ensure that we had the best organization that we possibly could. I think one of the things is that you start with hiring policy. And you figure out how you put hiring policy in that is diversity-oriented, equity-oriented. You need policy that has some to it, so that you start hiring people, and you have metrics that you can measure against. And that begins to change the dynamics of city employees. And the same thing that happens at the school district. You have to bring people in, and you have to set goals and things that you can achieve. I think that's something the city council can actually do, is put in policy. The other thing that we can do is professional development, education. And that's really where it changes as well. You guys sitting here care about this topic, or you may just be here to figure out who you're going to vote for. But I'm hoping that you care about this very important topic. What's most important is as you put professional development in place and you start educating people that are affected by this, that are interacting with our kids in the school district or our city employees who are dealing with all of us as citizens, that's where they need to have the training and the aptitude and the ability and also the confidence to deal with equity and diversity issues. And I think that's where the city council can put the biggest effect. I think the other thing that you have to do, from my perspective, is that you have to measure, and then you have to have some metrics that you can evaluate, and then figure out how you're doing, and then improve from there. One of the things in the school district that we've had for decades, we call it continuous improvement. Every year, you want to get a little better and figure out what you're doing well and things that you're not doing as well, and then correct, you know, embellish and grow the things you're doing well in, but then take a look at the things that you're not doing well and improve those. I think the city can do that. One of the things that, as specific things that I did, I've worked with the school district for a long time, and we had an all-meets-all project. for a long time and we had an all means all program. And that meant everyone has a chance to have a great education. What are the tools that they have to put in place to make that kid successful? And I think we can do that as a community. And I think most importantly is that this group has to continue to meet and the conversation has to stay alive. If you drop it, if you just pass on it for, you know, oh, this is great, energy right today, and you don't persevere, it's going to be lost and we'll just go back and be back to the same things. And I have my end card, so anyway, that's it.
So you've made it through your questions, Carol. We're going to give a couple of brief announcements, then turn it back over to the candidates to make their one-minute closing statements, starting with Donald Madderstork. And we'd like to thank all of you, all of the candidates who participated in tonight's forum, you can all see it right now. And we're very grateful that you were all willing to engage and be responsive on issues relating to diversity, equity and inclusion tonight. As a community, we're lucky to have such a strong group of candidates step forward to represent us, so thank you. There's a table in the entryway with candidates' literature and opportunities to support them. There's also information about respond racism and LO for Love and signup sheets to get our emails if you'd like. After tonight, if you are left wanting more, you have another chance to hear from the candidates on more issues at the candidate forum on October 18th, that's being sponsored by the Lake Oswego Review and the LO Youth Leadership Council. And I think I heard or remember that there's another forum as well, maybe on the 17th? Palisades neighborhood association. Read the review. So in some cases, a forum like this culminates with endorsements. Some people have asked us if we are going to do endorsements. Our organization do not do political, do not endorse political candidates. We encourage you, the audience members, however, to write letters to the editor following tonight's forum so that the broader community can get a sense for who you felt spoke well to the issues of diversity, equity and inclusion. And with that, we'll turn it back to our moderators to queue up the closing statements. Thank you, Amy. So now you guys will each have one minute for a closing statement. We'll start with Donald Madderstork, followed by Jackie Mans and so on. So please begin.
Okay, well, thank you very much for inviting me here this evening. It's certainly been educational for me. When Amy called me up, asked me if I was coming, I said to her, sure, I'll come, and, but I have to tell you that-